Okay, it is seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
She's not here. Ms. Ammons, are you here? Okay, she was here. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? He's gone. Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Mayor Pressing? Here.
And Carol is here.
Okay, Carol Ammons is here, thank you.
Thank you.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is December 2nd, 2013.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Dennis Roberts.
Second.
Seconded by Bill Brown. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, petitions and communications. Anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council, we ask that you please fill out one of these little cards that's at the table in the back. And I have one so far. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood do not wish to speak, but for the record, they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Unfinished business. I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with today. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole. Diane Marlin?
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2013-12-105, which is an ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the North Campus and King Park redevelopment project area within the city of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move ordinance number 2013-12-107, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at 610 South Glover, which is the Barnes Mobile Home Park.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move approval of ordinance number 2013-12-108, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2013, and this is 14, and this is for the Windsor Road preliminary engineering agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move approval of resolution number 2013-12-055R, which is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding roadway reconstruction of Windsor Road from Race Street to Philo Road.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
I move approval of resolution number 2013-12-056R, which is a resolution authorizing execution of a preliminary engineering services agreement for motor fuel tax funds, and that's for preliminary engineering services for reconstruction of Windsor Road from Race Street to Philo Road.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move approval of ordinance number 2013-12-109, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate, purchase portions of real estate parcels with PI numbers 25153400-002 and 251529300-002, Squire Farm.
And I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? That motion carries. I mean, I'm sorry, yes, that motion carries. I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, sorry.
I move approval of ordinance number 2013-12-110, which is an ordinance authorizing the lease of certain real estate, portions of real estate parcels which were the same as in the previous motion.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
I move approval of ordinance number 2013-12-111, an ordinance authorizing the submission of a petition for annexation to the Board of Trustees of the Urbana and Champaign Sanitary District at 1210 East University Avenue and 901 North Smith Road.
And I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And the final item on the committee of the whole is ordinance number 2013-12-112, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R II liquor licenses for CoFusion LLC, doing business as CoFusion, at 701 Gregory Place, Suite F.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As is required by law, as a liquor license holder in Urbana, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. I don't believe we have reports of special committees, and under reports of officers, I'd like to read two proclamations first. Whereas Michael Pollak has served the people of Urbana for four decades, and whereas he graduated from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and whereas ever the innovator, he started a local business and was the longtime co-owner of the former Record Service on Green Street in Campus Town, and whereas he doggedly pursued election to the Urbana City Council and served from 1989 to 1997 as the representative from Ward 5, and whereas Michael continued to serve the citizens of Urbana with distinction as a member and long-term chair of the Urbana Plan Commission from 2001 to 2013, and whereas Michael reinvented himself by going back to college and getting certified as a teacher of history at Urbana High School, where he became known as an inspired and highly effective educator, much appreciated by his students, and whereas Michael recently stepped down as a beloved teacher in history and government at Urbana High School in order to cope with serious health issues, and whereas the Urbana City Council wishes to honor the many contributions of Michael Pollak to the people of this community, now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim December 18th, 2013, as Michael Pollak Day in the City of Urbana in honor of his many good works. So let the record show, he got a standing ovation. And I do have one other. Whereas the United States of America has historically been a melting pot where people of all nationalities, religious faiths, and cultures come together as one, and as the strength of our great state of Illinois and the city of Urbana rests on the cooperative community of its citizens, whereas our only hope of establishing peace among diverse peoples is through recognizing our connectedness, our capacity for peacemaking, and peacemaking at home and abroad, and whereas the first day of a new year typically denotes hopeful expectation and positive resolve in the hearts and minds of our citizens, and whereas the School of Metaphysics is a worldwide organization founded in our country to promote peace, understanding, and goodwill through teaching that living peaceably begins by thinking peacefully, has called for a universal hour of peace over the midnight hour, December 31st, 2013, to January 1st, 2014, now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim December 31st, 2013, at 11:30 p.m. to January 1st, 2014, at 12:30 a.m., as the universal hour of peace, when the people of our great city might stand united in common purpose, committing ourselves in thought and action, so peace may move across the face of the earth in the dawning of the new year. Thank you. Are there any other reports of officers? Oh, Diane Marlin?
I just wanted to say thank you to Urbana Public Works. I took John Collins up on his offer of a snowplow ride-along, so on Saturday afternoon, one of our employees, Troy Richmond, allowed me to get into the snowplow and ride along with him for four hours, and I learned a whole lot about plowing and dealing with snow, and I just appreciate very much the opportunity, and I wanted to thank everyone for the outstanding efforts they've made over the last three or four days doing 12-hour shifts clearing the streets of snow.
Thank you. Our crews really do a great job. They get the job done very quickly and efficiently, and I hope you cleared your sidewalk too, Diane.
I did.
Good, thank you.
But the city didn't.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to new business. There are four appointments that I present to you for your consideration. First is Fire Chief Brian Nightlinger, then Fire Pension Board Rich Henchel, Police Pension Board Rich Henchel, and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Craig Schonkweiler.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Absolutely.
Those opposed? Let the record show, that was unanimous, and thank you all very much. Next is ordinance number 2013-12-113, an ordinance approving the extension of preliminary and final plat approval for countryside second subdivision plan case number 2222-S-13. And here we have...
Hello, Mayor.
What?
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
Okay.
Do explain this to us.
Yes. This is a bit of housekeeping for a plat that's about to expire. The plat was approved by City Council on June 17th of this year, and signed by the mayor on June 27th. There's a stipulation in our zoning ord-- or, sorry, my-- our subdivision ordinance that says plats need to be recorded within 180 days of being approved, and that frame is-- timeframe is about to expire for this plat. There's a couple reasons it wasn't able to be recorded as of yet. The applicant is pursuing a couple of additional subdivision waivers, which are actually going to be going to Plan Commission on Thursday, so we just need to make sure the plat is still valid when those waivers are heard, so we're asking that you consider this case. And the petitioner is here in the audience. I think he'd like to speak on the matter as well.
Okay, thank you, Jeff Engstrom, and here's the petitioner. If you want to just take a seat, and the microphone is there.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Marcus Harris. You may remember me, I was before you in June, and due to other projects, and as Mr. Engstrom said, we're pursuing a couple other waivers in the subdivision, so I haven't got a chance to plat it yet, so I was hoping you would consider extending that another six months, so that we can finalize the details and get that done. Do you have any questions about the subdivision?
Any questions for the petitioner? Looks like you don't have any. Oh, Dennis has a question.
Yeah, not for the petitioner, but for Jeff. With this, because this is right on the very corner of Anthony and Cottonwood, would there be any future aspect that might be-- might affect this subdivision if Cottonwood was chosen in the future as a new on-and-off ramp for the construct-- to be constructed via I-74?
No, there's plenty of right-of-way on the south side of Anthony, so.
Okay, that's my only question.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Mike Madigan. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons? What did she say?
She sneezed.
I think she sneezed. Carol, did you want to vote on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, did you vote?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is ordinance number 2013-12-114, an ordinance approving a special use permit and conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a recycling center in the IN-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District at 910 and 1,000 West Saline Court. And here is Jeff Engstrom to explain this.
Yes. All right. This is an application for a special use permit to allow a facility that would recycle residential asphalt shingles for use in asphalt paving. It's-- recycling centers required to have a special use permit in the IN-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. This property was platted in the spring of this year into two parcels. If you take a look at the map here, the northern parcel is 1,000 West Saline Court, the southern parcel is 910 West Saline Court. The operation would take place on the northern parcel, as well as the northern 400 or so feet of the southern parcel here. In addition to the special use permit, there's an application for a conditional use permit to allow for two uses on the southern parcel at 910 West Saline Court, and the conditional use permit is needed whenever we have two principal uses on a parcel. In this case, it's a kind of a preemptive conditional use permit, because the owner is planning to apply for variant-- I'm sorry, to apply for permits to construct a construction waste recycling facility at 910 West Saline Court. But that case will be brought to council and Plan Commission in-- over the next year or so. This is really just kind of a preemptive conditional use permit to allow the two uses on one lot, so that this operator, Southwind Raz, knows that they will be able to go ahead and invest in this property. So the proposed use would divert materials from local landfills to be reused as asphalt for paving. Let me just pull up the site plan. Here's the site plan. The site plan meets zoning ordinance standards, with the exception, the one exception, the petitioner still needs to turn in a landscaping plan, landscaping and screening plan. They've agreed to do so, but otherwise, all zoning ordinance criteria are met. The site would be paved up here on the north, north half of the site, to allow for piles of materials to be processed. Looking at the criteria for a special use permit, it will be conducive to the public use at this location. This is an area with lots of heavy industrial uses in the city. If it's going to be in the city, this is the best place to put it. Proposed use will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it's located. Petitioners installing different things to deal with runoff and dust, and they will obtain their EPA permits before they're allowed to operate, and the proposed use meets the regulations of the district in which it's located, as discussed. The proposed conditional use permit is-- has similar criteria, and those are wrapped into the special use permit, since the special use permit is a higher level of review. And also, the proposed use is consistent with the 2005 Conference of Plan Future Land Use Designation of Heavy Industrial for the site. And the Plan Commission voted seven ayes to zero nays to forward the case to City Council with a recommendation for approval, with three conditions before you. And the petitioner is here, and he'd like to give a quick talk about what they'd like
Mayor City Council, good evening. I'm Rich Garrard, appearing on behalf of the applicant, which is Southwind Raz LLC, and the owner. Also present is Tom Jordan from FOTH, who is the site engineer, in case there's any questions regarding that. Maybe I would briefly tell you about the applicant and what the process is that we're requesting. The applicant, Southwind Raz, is currently operating 12 of the facilities that we're talking about right now. And what this is, is recycling asphalt shingles, and the acronym, it goes by RAS. And these are, to tell you briefly the process, tear-off shingles are taken from a house when a roof is being replaced. All these are residential asphalt shingles from roofs. It's brought in, put in a truck, the truck is taken to the recycling center, and at that stage, there's a weighing and an inspection of the shingles, and then I'll talk you a little bit about the process, but basically what happens is the shingles are chopped, and then they're screened for size, and then that material is taken off-site and becomes an additive into asphalt. And it's a-- it's really a green technology and process with a lot of benefits throughout the process. In the beginning, when the shingles are torn off and delivered, instead of going to a landfill, they go to here, and the charge to the roofing contractor is less cost than if it went to a landfill. If it went to a landfill, it would be filling up the landfill. Asphalt shingles are the third-largest by bulk construction that goes into materials that go into a landfill, so it saves landfill time, or space, excuse me. In addition to that, the shingle itself is made up of anywhere from 27% to 30% petroleum, and then a high-grade aggregate, and then a binder, and all the same products that are in asphalt, but with a high quality. So by recycling, and 99% of all this materials that we're talking about, they're going to go on-site, are recycled and reused, and everything comes back off of site. So we are saving the-- all the petroleum, rather than putting it in a landfill, we're using it again and recycling along with the aggregates. In addition, it creates some additional jobs, three to eight jobs on the site, and so you can see, it really has a serious-- it's one of the few green technologies that's self-sustaining. It doesn't need to be subsidized. And so there are no known environmental issues with it, because when you think about it, the material itself is what's on your roof. It's your residential shingles. So water running off your roof isn't a problem, and it isn't a problem with this material. And then it goes into asphalt. That's the same asphalt that's in your streets and your parking lots and so forth. The other benefit I didn't mention is when it goes into asphalt, because it's a high-quality product itself, it actually improves the quality of the asphalt, and it's slightly less expensive than using virgin petroleum and materials. And the-- it's now, it's been approved by IDOT and by the Tollway Authority, the City of Chicago, many counties and municipalities for their specs for roads, and it is now a commonly-used product. To-- I'm going to briefly explain to you what happens, and let's see here, if we've got-- I'm going to just skip through these, not take all your time, but just to kind of show you, this is what the equipment is that's used on the site. So it's not a heavy type of industrial use. At the far-up-left-hand corner, that's the scale where it comes in, and then the load's inspected. You look over to the right, basically the load is dumped down and then loaded into a hopper, and then you'll see it's going through a sorting line. There are two permits involved in running this operation through the IEP. There's a 2234, a beneficial use determination, called a BUD permit, and then a 2254, I'm sorry, I may have said this wrong, 2238 and a 2254. And the difference is, the 2238 is a determination by the IEP that this is not a waste product, that it is being recycled, and it has a beneficial use determination, so it's commonly called a BUD. And that allows us to take this material and process the material. The next permit, the 2254, allows us to sort the materials. So when you see, you'll see there's a sorting line, and what happens is, when it goes through that sorting line, they will pull out wood, if there's any, there's magnets that pull out the nails, if any aluminum or other metal, and then those are sorted and put down, dumped into those dumpsters, and then when they're filled, they're taken off and gone to a recycling center. So the wood, the metal, the nails, the shingles, it's all recycled from this center. Then when it comes out after it's been sorted, then it goes through a chopper. That chopper has within it a dust control device. The only dust that really could occur is through the chopping, and it has a spray bars within it itself. And then you can see, it, when it chops it, it then goes into this trommel, which is a screener, and it makes it of a consistent granular size, and if it's too large, it goes back through the chopper, and then we have the RAS material, which is, like I said, it's something like an aggregate. It's then put in trucks and it's taken to an asphalt plant off-site, and then it's used in the material. In this process, there's no heat, there are no chemicals, it's just chopping the material is all that's involved in it. So, I mean, I think that gives you a pretty good, quick thumbnail sketch about the process. We'd be happy to answer any other questions or details you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Diane?
What kind of-- what region will you be serving, or would this facility be serving?
It's serving this region. I mean, the biggest cost involved, it has to do with trucking, both trucking the materials and then trucking the materials to the asphalt plants. So that's why there's 12 sites around. They're used locally, because there's only a region of, and I'm not sure if it's a 20-mile region that it can service, you know, but the closer it is, the more economically viable it is, the materials.
So a customer who's looking at companies to do their roof, one of the questions they could ask is, do you-- now, one of the questions they can ask is, do you recycle the shingles?
Yes, and I believe that actually, there's just been, there's been a recent statute that has been passed, that if there is a recycling facility available at a reasonable cost, then you're required to use that, rather than put the material into a dump.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, and so, to follow up on that, do you use one of the local asphalt plants, then, or are they all customers, or potential customers?
I believe, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's an existing agreement, but basically, it's used for the local asphalt plants, and I know in general, they use more than one plant, and they use them in, because of the mixes, only a certain percentage is something like your, you know, ethanol or something in your gas, you only use a certain percentage of this material in the total package. And some of the formulas for making the asphalt, there's different ones, require a certain amount of this material.
And sort of follow up on that, and then so, if we wanted to really sort of close the loop, we could include that as a possible material for use on our city roads?
Yes, and you might be looking at it already, as I said, in fact, some of the Tollway and IDOT mixes require it. Because it is a green technology, they get a certain amount of points for using a green material in their mixes, and this is, qualifies as that.
Bill Gray?
Yeah, this is something we have a special interest in. In fact, just last week, at the I Hotel, there was the annual by-tumulus paving conference, and there was a presenter that talked about using RAS. that talked about using RAS, along with recycled asphalt, recycled asphalt pavements, other materials, and creating a new hot mix asphalt that had probably 95 percent or higher of recycled materials. And there was a discussion of three pilot projects in the Chicago Line area, and the contractors that provided this. And when you look at traditional virgin material, Vitamins that make the hot mix asphalt versus, you know, using RAS, for example, your prices are lower. So, it was very promising. So, I think this really does help in closing that loop, and a very viable product. So, you do have two asphalt-- hot mix asphalt producers in the area, so I don't know what the arrangements may be, but there is a ready market for this. So, I think the future is very promising for reuse here.
Diane?
How many jobs will be created at this facility?
Generally, it's three to eight, and it, you know, it depends on the volume of materials that come.
Are these full-time jobs?
There-- once again, it depends on the volume. What can't-- what does happen here sometimes is that a certain amount has to be collected before it can be processed. And so, generally, there's some full-time, and then if there's a large-- particularly a large volume that has to be processed, then there may be additional people that are hired on a more temporary basis.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
I feel compelled to ask about the risk of fire, I think, because we had a number of firefighters in the audience. At some point, when it's stacked up, is there something special you have to do in order to reduce the risk of spontaneous combustion, or is that just not a worry?
It's really not a worry. It's-- it's not a-- it's an inert material, and when you think about it, it's the roofs on your shing-- it's your shingles on your homes that are everywhere. They're not a type of material that spontaneously combusts or really burns very easily. It's really-- it's just not a-- it's not a risk or an issue. You know, when you think about it, what happens to this material, it's the same identical material that's in your asphalt streets and your parking lots, and they don't start fire.
I guess the main-- the main point would probably be before the separation, so if the material accumulated before it went through and got the wood out and stuff like that would probably be the-- I don't know. I'm guessing. But if you haven't had problems, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Dennis?
I guess I'm curious about the hours of operation. Were you going to be working at night? And I'm worried-- I'm interested in knowing about how the site's going to be lit, if you know that there's going to be a lot of overhead lighting at the site.
It does not operate at night, and just looking for your-- I had put in these materials, the hours of operation, I believe--
6:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Yep, 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and usually five days a week, or sometimes on Saturday, and six days a week.
And my second question is, the schematic that you show for the layout of your property indicates that the top third or half will be paved, so that the operation can take place in the sorting. You don't really mention so much about how the southern section would be used, and is that being reserved for expansion, or do you have any other plans for that?
On the section that we're using, which would be the blue and the yellow, and then you'll see, on the far kind of left side is where the entrances.
Yes.
And that's going to be a joint entrance with us, and then a future use, but which isn't before today and hasn't happened. For us, from the entrance all the way through, it's hard-surfaced, and that was one of the requirements of the villa-- of the city, and it's in the engineering plans that are attached. So, there-- and the blue and the yellow is the differences, is an asphalt surface and a wrap, which is a recycled asphalt material surface. They're both hard surfaces. So, all ours is resurfaced. The south portion of it, I don't know, because I haven't seen the plans for that use. And that's going to-- my understanding is the owner's going to be applying for a-- to recycle construction materials there. And I-- this-- I mean, maybe the city could explain, but I know that we're having a hard surface requiring on our recycling, so. But we won't be using any surface that's not hard-surfaced.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I've got one more question.
Oh.
I have a question for Jeff here.
Me, too.
Okay, a question for Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, there was a-- in reading through the notes from the Plan Commission, there was a fourth condition that got dropped, but I couldn't find what it-- what that fourth condition was.
Ah. For the Plan Commission, we had recommended a fourth condition to make the conditional use part of this approval, conditional on the other operator, Henson, applying for their use through-- through the city and EPA. But one of our Plan Commissioners thought it didn't make sense to make the first use conditional on the second use.
And that will come as a separate-- a separate plan case and everything, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, and I guess my-- it wasn't clear from looking at the map and the-- and the boundaries of the city, whether-- is this-- is this development within the city bounds?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Saline Court is?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
That's why we're dealing with it.
All right, yep.
Charlie?
Yeah, that reminds me. The other question I had was, it's in the city limits, but it's not-- it's in the Champaign School District. And I know we discussed a different points, asking folks to voluntarily separate from one and join ours. And I don't know where we are on that. And I don't know whether that's something we can require as part of--
Jeff?
I don't know. I'd have to look into it.
That could be done at a later point?
Yes, it could.
Okay, here comes Tom Carino, Economic Development.
I'm not an expert on this, but I've spoken quite a bit with Jack Waller, and Jack Waller has done a lot of research on this. And basically, what he said is, even with the voluntary consent of the property owner, it's very difficult to enact a change between school districts, because you have to go through a state process, and there has to be a benefit to the students in the area. And so, my understanding in talking to Jack is, it's impractical and very difficult to take property out of one school district and add it to another, even with the consent of the property owner. So, that's-- if-- if we want more information, I'm sure Jack can provide that, but my understanding was, it's pretty difficult.
Okay. Yes, Jim Simon?
Having accomplished that very task a number of years ago, if the two school districts are willing to enter into an intergovernmental agreement and work out the tax relationship, because obviously, there are no students here, but, you know, taxes are following here behind, it can be done, and the state generally approves it. But both school districts, to expedite it, would have to agree.
Thank you. Okay. Mike?
Just a couple of quick questions. How high will the piles of shingles-- how high could they be?
30 feet would be the height, the highest. And I can explain why, but, you know, well, real-- very quickly, what happens sometimes if you want to do an IDOT job or some of the Tollway Authority jobs, if it's a larger job, they require that all the materials be in place first, before they take the bid and start it, because they want to make sure everything is there. So, sometimes you have to have a little larger pile than you normally would have.
Right, so that might be an exception, not necessarily a standard, but--
Yes, I mean, the one thing I would point out is that, if you look at the site, I'm sorry, here, you see in the far-left-hand corner here, that the recycling center across the way, on their aggregate piles across the street there, have probably 30 piles, and a great deal of them, much larger than these two would ever be.
There you go. So, there are already those type of piles out there?
Yeah, it's, as I said, this is an oil storage facility, a transfer station, an asphalt plant--
Right.
--and an aggregate storage area.
So, we're not talking about any kind of unsightly piles for the neighbors?
No.
Because they have them, too. Yeah, okay. How far is this? This is probably a question for you. How far is this from the Olympia-- Olympia Drive extension?
I think it would be about half a mile or so.
Okay, so plenty of distance from the road in terms of the use, if there were to be like a light industrial or commercial development along that strip. This isn't going to-- none of this is going to impede that, really?
Yes, it'll-- it'll be pretty far from Olympia. Although, I should note, Lincoln Avenue will be relocated to extend straight north and kind of curve along the side of the site.
Right, right. Okay, and then, dust, that's my other question. So, how is dust? I understand that when the dust is working its way through the machinery, that it's controlled with-- with water. What about the actual piles? Do they-- do you experience dust, or any kind of wind erosion off of those piles onto the neighbors?
We don't. Two things happen. One is that it is a granular type of thing, like an aggregate, but also, because of the petroleum and that, it tends to be kind of sticky. You know, it adheres, it sticks to itself, so it isn't something that blows around.
Okay, well, these are just some of the complaints that you hear about, and you've answered every one of them to my satisfaction, so I appreciate that.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Roberts, is there a second? By Smythe?
And the motion includes a three stipulations by the Planning Commission.
Okay. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
And I should have introduced our new Fire Chief, Brian Nightlinger. I think he has his family with him.
Please stand up, Brian.
Otherwise, it's a big parade.
Come forward.
Do you want to say something, Brian, or?
I'm afraid your cheerleading section got called away, though.
Yeah, they're back. Your cheerleaders are all back. Sorry to keep you waiting.
I guess on behalf of myself and the Fire Department, I just want to thank you for the appointment, and thank you for the support of the council, and plan on doing you guys a good job.
I think you will. Thank you very much. Okay, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.